...response on a request or comment expressed publicly during the citizen comments portion of the agenda. The board will study, research all expressed concerns, issues, or requests and may respond at a later date. Okay, the first person on the list is Russ Dunford, organization representative self, purpose of visit, note of appreciation.
Do we have the timer? Because I want to be legal. Okay, today my name is Russ Dunford, a parent, volunteer. My title with the volleyball team is marketing czar, that's self-appointed, community involvement. But while I'm here to advocate this for the Huntsville City School volleyball program, I gave some handouts, sent it by email, take a look at that if you would. But what I'd like to draw your attention to is you can take five minutes of your life and look at that, that I can't get back. That's a cover letter that I wrote mentor Keith Ward, your director of communications at ETV, and what I asked him for was, hey, let's show the love, if we could, to volleyball that we do to football, and I think to basketball, he reached out to. He did respond back to me favorably. Actually said that that was the next sport on the docket to be incorporated in with ETV. And I told him it's a good thing that Google Fiber is coming here because volleyball is fast. Most of these girls work at Jimmy John's after school and practice. I met him in a hallway out here, Dr. Werdensky. We've already inked a deal with ESPN to broadcast as well, so I'll just throw that out. That was a joke for those who don't listen to recording. I did reach out to the local community. WAAY has responded favorably, said they'll take a look at what they were doing. I advocated the Friday Night Lights equivalent to football for volleyball. The other stations are pending. I would tell you that when you look at this team right here for Huntsville High School and the other teams as well, Grissom, I have all of them, phenomenal group of girls. But as Coach Donahue tells me, and she mentioned, she reads every GPA out at the end of the year banquet, okay? So thank God I didn't play volleyball. But she does that, and she said, this team has the highest GPA of any team at Huntsville High. Okay? And when I say GPA, and I'm talking, if you've got a 3.8, you're slacking, okay? So she not only enforces the winning attitude, but the academics piece, and I love that about her and the program itself. My daughter Annie here plays, she's here with that. My youngest daughter Abby is coming up, she's here in spirit with me tonight. And I would tell you that, as you saw with Mr. Isaiah Franklin, if I have his name corrected earlier, one of the things I know with the integration of things is that if these girls don't get started and get experienced, exposed to this early, and I say early, I'm talking at elementary school, if you show up at the ninth grade level to try out, I hate to say it, but it's just too hard. And we lose a lot of opportunities. So hopefully, with the ETV and that being a venue, that we can get earlier interest with girls. And with that comes other good things as we know it, with the sport, confidence, et cetera, it carries over, and on and on. So with that, you have a handout there, it's of the girls' team from last year. I would tell you that we finished in the semifinals. Quick bullets for you, Huntsville High School as a whole has won 11 state championships. And I tell people all the time that if we'd done that in football, we'd be building a stadium out here that would rival Auburn or Alabama. And that's okay. But it is, the programming of ETV also gives coaches an opportunity to go to and look if they have an interest in a young lady. That equals scholarships, just like with Mr. Isaiah earlier, and other opportunities for these young ladies to excel. So thank you for the opportunity, and thank you for the support from ETV.
Next speaker is Mark Benner, organization representative self, purpose of visit, my citizen comment experience is 2016.
Good evening. My name is Mark Benner, and I'm a citizen of Huntsville, Alabama, and I reside at 2501 Weatherstone Road, southeast Huntsville, Alabama, 35803. I'm not representing any organization, and I want to briefly discuss with you this evening my Huntsville City School Board citizen comment experience for the calendar year 2016. Bottom line upfront, first of all, I want to commend the board, commend the Huntsville City School Board for giving citizens of Huntsville, Alabama, the opportunity to comment on any topic concerning public education, hence citizen comments. Thank you for allowing Huntsville citizens to talk with you directly, face-to-face, and not social media or emails. I have noted several observations, which I am going to share with you this evening, to include recommendations that will improve the transparency between the Huntsville City School Board, the teachers, the students, parents, and the citizens of Huntsville. Observation one, is anyone taking notes? The first time that I addressed the board presenting a citizen comment, I noticed that the superintendent, board members, and board clerk packed up their laptops and prepared their belongings to leave prior to the commencement of citizen comments. If no one's taking notes, how can the school board respond later? I humbly recommend that Mrs. Farrell denote highlights for each citizen comment, so the school board members can discuss the comments during the next work session and determine if additional action is required. This is the primary reason why I provide hard copies of my citizen comments. Put down your phones, please. I would respectfully ask that the board members please put down their phones when citizens are presenting their comments. Paying attention to all citizens when talking to you face-to-face will demonstrate that you're interested in the topics being discussed. I will make the same promise when you're addressing the citizens during your work sessions. Time limit's too short. I'll have to tell you, three minutes goes by very quickly, lightning speed. Allowing a time limit of five minutes will allow citizens the opportunity to present meaningful challenges and follow up with recommended courses of action. I do want to say, I'm going to paraphrase this, don't make citizens wait until the end. Four hours is a long time to wait so that the citizens can get up and talk. I do want to thank Walter McGinnis for the 18th February board meeting. It was aggressive agenda, and it went very long, and Walter did allow us to go ahead and come up and speak, so thank you, sir. Hearing come, and the conclusion, hearing comments from the citizens of Huntsville, my opinion, is vital to maintaining transparency between the governing body of the school board and the citizens. As you're all aware, the citizens of Huntsville elect you to your board seats. You do not notice lately, the citizens in the districts that you represent are energized and ready for a change in the present circumstances. I will continue to print citizen comments to the Huntsville City School Board for the foreseeable future. In the coming months, I will encourage every citizen to register to vote in the upcoming city elections. Local elections are the ones that have the most significant impact on the citizen's daily life.
Mr. Benner, time is up. Thank you. Finish your sentence. Next speaker is Betsy Burman, organization representative self, purpose of visit, special education.
Hi, I'm Betsy Burman, and actually, I'm here as the president of the Autism Resource Foundation, a local nonprofit that has been in existence for almost 10 years. I wanted to let you know that what I thought was a little bit away of August 25th, but looking at the calendar as you put it up, it's like next week, apparently. We are bringing in Pete Wright, who is the author of Wright's Law, to have a conference here at UAH Chantan Auditorium. He is the gentleman, an attorney, who is the one that authorized special education law here in the United States. So we brought him in about four and a half years ago. It's about time to educate new parents and some old ones, like me. So we are bringing him back. I want to invite all of you and other parents, I'm going to Madison City, Madison County, Decatur. This was my first stop, I knew this was the last board meeting of this year. But wanted to make sure that y'all got it on your calendar for next year, because it's not that long from now. But wanted to invite y'all, be sure and let Amy and her department know, okay? Thank you.
The next person, and I know I've said this wrong before, Coriann Paul, is that correct? Coriann Paul, self, and the purpose of visit is communication.
I'm Corinne Paul. I actually go by Cory. I live at 48 Bluffie Drive, southeast of Huntsville. And I'm curious if anyone remembers what the word of the month is. It's courage, defined as mental or moral strength to venture, persevere, and withstand danger, fear, or difficulty. I spoke a few weeks ago and was concerned about the direction of Huntsville City Schools, and that took courage. I'm still sweating right now. What I didn't say then was that in January, I decided to homeschool my child. That took courage, courage to stand against those that say, I'm giving up on the system. I'm part of the problem. Courage to go back to creating lessons and rubrics in grading papers when, at this point in my life, I wasn't expecting to do that work. Courage to do what was right for myself. But if you remember me from a few weeks ago, you will remember that I have another child, a daughter. Her experience has been mostly positive, and public school is a good fit for her, for now. I'm still concerned about where we're headed as a school system, and with the lack of open and honest communication. It's for her and all of our children that I'm asking you now to be courageous. Withstand what is difficult. It's hard to admit that everything is not okay in Huntsville City Schools. Venture into conversations about the things that need to improve alongside the celebrations of success. When parents and students and teachers ask questions and bring up inconsistencies and are struggling to understand what is happening and why it is happening, please don't brush them aside. Let's persevere together. I'm doing my part as a citizen to be informed. I'm attending board meetings, I'm researching documents online, I'm trying to maintain an open, positive outlook. I contributed my comments and questions to the drafted book, Peddr Learning Guide. I'm asking you, leaders of our school system, as well as our citizen-elected Board of Education, to do your part. Peter Drucker said, start with what is right rather than what is acceptable. Have the moral strength to do what's right. We need open and honest communication and courage.
Next speaker is Michelle Woodruff, organization representative self, purpose of visit, testing and special education.
My name is Michelle Woodruff, and I am from Henneco. I am here representing my child and parents and children that are in our same situation. Actually spent the day typing this nice speech, this is my first board meeting ever. I feel like I had been silent long enough, and I wanted to release that and speak, but I'm going to speak more from my heart. Last week, do you know what testing does to a child? What special needs? It makes them throw up. It makes the mother feel like she's failed, because she didn't know about opting out. She didn't know about accommodations that should have been in place. My child wanted to finish the test because he thought if he had to finish it, he'd pass the sixth grade. Like, you don't have to. Dr. Werdensky, I'm not sure if you remember me from years ago. We met in the parking lot after a digital one-to-one. I asked for books. I asked for books for my child in this weird disbuilding, and he said, I'll get them to you. I asked my teachers for, every year, can I have a book? You cannot have a book. You cannot have a book for a special needs kid. We are not allowed to give them to you. It is heartbreaking to see a child who cannot read, who's been in the system since he was three years old, only now, this year, become aware of assistive technology that can read to him. How did we let this go on so long? How did I not know, as a parent? My special ed teachers did not know that this was an option for him. I'm here because I love my child. I'm here for all the parents that are not here who love their children, who don't have a voice, who are busy doing homework for four hours a night, because their child has to be read every single day. They can't do their homework by themselves, so this meeting is not necessarily top priority. I'm trying to make it my priority to be more informed, to let y'all know there's great programs going on in this school system that I'm not seeing for my special ed kid.
Next person on the list is Kathy Roker, organization representative self, and the purpose of visit is math teams.
I don't know if I'll follow up, but I'm going to try. So 90% of this meeting is focused on high school. I have a four-year-old, I'm kind of worried about elementary, so I'm going to focus on that for a minute. So when the consent order came out, let me tell you my address first, 1003 Riviera, South Huntsville. I'm going to talk about the consent order and math clubs. So when the consent order came out, I read it, and I was, my first thought was, wow, we should have been doing this all along. Why did it take the government, federal government, judge, the DOJ, to tell us to do these things? And I got really excited when I saw about math clubs being put into every school. I've been running math teams for five years, it's my love. And so I saw this as an opportunity to make the district stronger. Unfortunately, the rhetoric coming out of the district is because of the DOJ, we have to do these things. Because of the consent order, we have to do these things. We had a great foundation in a lot of ways with our math programs and different things going on, but for whatever reason, we're blaming the consent order in unnecessary ways. First thing that happened was we were told that there could be no parent volunteers this year for the math teams. The strongest math teams in Huntsville and Madison are run by parents. I love teachers, do not get me wrong. But for whatever reason, in this arena, parents are amazing. Second thing that happened, you can't have a team outside of school hours. Even if you have one during the day, you still can't have one outside of school hours. That's when the competitive teams really get the bang for their buck. Our competitive teams have fallen apart this year. I can name the schools. Third thing, 600 students came to the Huntsville City Inter-Mural Competition, amazing, 600 students. But what didn't happen, there was no feedback loop. We never found out what was on the test. We never found out how our kids did. A few kids walked away with trophies. I couldn't give my kids a high five that said, you're the only one on the team that got that question right. You got two questions right last time, you got five right this time. I am so proud of you. Nothing, zero. I've asked for it multiple times. You know what I was told today? It was shredded. All of that information was shredded? We are in a federal court order, and we shred all those documents? All I want to know was my team, fourth or sixth? That's all I asked for. The documents were shredded? It's frightening. It's frightening. There is no transparency. I went to that tournament, I spent six hours of my volunteer time for these kids. I've spent two to three hours every single week since August. I got nothing to take back. So there's a ROI. Do we know what that means? I know Dr. Werdensky does. It's return on investment. Nothing for that tournament. I would love to help you guys. I think I can put a great team together to bring the math teams along. Please let me help.
Next speaker is Shannon Windsor, representing self, purpose of visit, computers and textbooks.
Good evening. My name is Shannon Windsor. I have two children in the Huntsville City School System, one in elementary school and one in high school. I've been very active in my children's schools as a volunteer for many years now, serving in various positions, including PTA president. When the computers were issued four years ago, parents and teachers were repeatedly reassured that they would be used as teaching tools in the classroom, not to replace textbooks or any other teaching method. We agree that having computers available for classroom learning is important in our current world of technology. But I feel it is vital to have a variety of resources, methods, and tools available, including textbooks, in every classroom. As time has passed by, I believe the laptops have been overused, and now parents and teachers have been told that with the exception of a classroom set available only for checkout in the library, all textbooks will be removed from the schools. Sorry, removed from the schools. If we have, if we already have textbooks in the schools, why not leave them for resources rather than store them offsite? The thought of no textbooks being readily available to our students is hard to believe. Children already spend too much time staring at a computer screen, TV, or other electronic device. Studies conducted by the American Academy of Pediatrics have shown that excessive media use can lead to attention problems, school difficulties, sleep and eating disorders, and obesity. The amount of excessive screen time isn't the only issue with the laptops. As a parent and a substitute teacher, I see the daily struggles the children have with computer issues. Computers not charging properly, students not able to log on to SchoolNet or other programs, students being kicked off in the middle of a math or writing assignment and losing their work that they've done thus far, or computers glitching and shutting down during a test, which we saw quite a bit of in the last few weeks with end-of-course exams and the ACT ASPIRE tests. There is so much valuable teaching time lost during the day due to computer issues. Teachers and students need to have a very high confidence in the digital curriculum and hardware provided that works properly and efficiently the vast majority of the time in order to do their jobs well and for students to be successful. Computers should not be a hindrance or a distraction to the learning process. Children have different learning styles and academic needs, and a variety of teaching tools should be available. In order to provide an exceptional learning environment for all students, in the end, no matter what methods or materials are used, the litmus test should always be, is what we are doing in the best interest of our students? Thank you.
Next speaker is Lisa Scrimshaw, organization representative self, purpose of visit, developmental appropriate education.
Hi, I'm Lisa Scrimshaw. I'm actually speaking on behalf of Huntsville City School parent and substitute teacher. Dear Superintendent and Board of Education, my child was excited to go to school this past fall. She couldn't wait to start kindergarten. I worry her enthusiasm will be buried under a system that forces her to only see in two dimensions. Enthusiasm buried under a barrage of worksheets and topics being briefly covered before moving on to the next one. It won't matter if she masters the material, because it's time for another concept. How much excitement is there when emphasis is placed on the ability to regurgitate information rather than discovering how to critically think? Even in kindergarten, art and music are taught once every two weeks, although research tells us how critical this is to early development. She is part of a system that says it is better to learn more complex material at an early age, despite evidence to the contrary. How much longer will she clamor to go to school when there is a curriculum that has a student writing sentences before teaching her to read? Learning what a preposition is before she can spell that word? And getting an outpouring of tests and grades before she understands she is being evaluated? The focus is on a curriculum that is tailored to meet testing scores instead of educating children. A curriculum that does not allow for inquiry-based learning and does not allow a teacher to view students as individuals, only data points. Why should there be joy in learning when it does not show up on a spreadsheet? Why teach my child to love education if it takes away time to prepare for the next test? The only benchmark, benchmark that appears to matter. Although I personally think grading kindergarteners is absurd, our daughter has worked hard for the semester and done very well. Kindergarteners are made to take the SchoolNet test without any assistance. Because of this, grades fell from the low 90s to the upper 70s. Is this really a good measurement of a child's comprehension? Also, two days of tests almost negated a semester's worth of grades. Is this how we want our children to be introduced to school? She will soon have her head buried in an iPad, even if that is not the best way for her to learn. Many schools are now realizing technology is one tool among many and should not be the sole conduit for learning. She will not receive this type of balanced education, driven by inspired teachers that have some flexibility in how to implement dynamic lesson plans. She might be creative, and she might learn differently, but she must learn to conform, to be like the other students, because any deviation is not tolerated. A multitude of studies show that young children learn best through play, that allows them to problem-solve later as they experience the world around them. I wonder how much room there is for play in my daughter's regimented day? How many tools are in the classroom that rely on her imagination and allow her to decide what the answer will be? Instead, she is learning to fill in the blank and check the box. But what will happen when college comes and the whole test is a blank? And there is no multiple choice, and there is no right or wrong answer. My child is excited to go to school, but for how much longer?
Next speaker is Pamela Hill, organization representative self, purpose of visit, thanks for the memories.
There should be lights and confetti. I'm Pam Hill. I live at 327 South Bat Creek Road, Madison, Alabama, District 5. I voted District 5, and I love District 5. As a five-year-old in 1966, I had new crayons, pants my mama had just made me, and I walked into Highlands Elementary School. I better put my glasses on. Oh, Highlands Elementary School was in District 5. My favorite teacher was Mrs. Estha Mocker. Fifteen years later, she came to my wedding. My fourth-grade teacher was strict, Mrs. Broadhead, but she told me I was smart, and I believed her. I then decided that someday I was going to be that teacher. I was in fourth grade, and today I'm still in fourth grade. I then went to Ed White Middle School. I remember a teacher threw a chair across the pod, and my mother came to the school and told my principal, Tom Drake, about that. Next, I had to go to high school. I went to Butler High School. I was a little bit afraid, but I did just fine. I made it as a Dixie Deb, and I was pretty smart. I think I was a nerd, but the football players still thought I was cute. I was probably, okay, already said that. I like that part. Let me go. I will forever, oh, yes, I will forever remember I wrecked the car in Driver's Ed at Butler, and my husband today will not let me drive his truck. I graduated with the largest class Butler ever had, and I was near the top of my class. My parents were very proud. I never lost my dream of being a teacher, because teachers keep children safe and keep their word. Life happened, but I stayed committed to Huntsville City Schools. I have two beautiful children and four more beautiful grandchildren that graduated from Grissom. Both of my children are successful today in Huntsville and in North Alabama. I enjoyed being a room mother, a substitute teacher, a mentor, a PTA volunteer, cheerleader mom, a football mom, and much more. I finally finished my five, my first of five education degrees in 1998. Norton Webb, who is now gone, was my principal at Lakewood who hired me. Boy, were things different in the college classroom. Even my student teaching at Stone Middle School didn't prepare me to have a class of my own. To be a good or a great teacher takes experience, years of experience. I also believe it's a calling. You can tell who's called to teach and who reports to work. I eventually worked with Ed White, Swerghampton, Cove, Dawson, and Williams. I've also taught summer school at Stone and Grissa. Oh my goodness. Things have changed now. You can't make friends with your principal or your cohorts. Everyone has constantly moved around, which causes disruption and chaos. Teachers are now told to follow directions instead of using their creativity. Tests become more important than teaching. Contracts are more important than commitment, and data is a priority over discipline. Whoa, that's a lot. I'll go to the end. I've seen hope disappear from the eyes of educators, and many have left. If my adding is correct, I think it was 72 have resigned this month. I tried to write, call, email, and speak to those who could have made a difference, but nobody listened. I'll end with Garth Brooks' words, and please let me finish it. Looking back on the memories we've shared, for a moment of the day, all the world was right, and many lives were better. And now I'm glad I didn't know how it all would end, the way it all would go. I could have missed the pain, but I would never have missed this dance. My path continued across and out of District 5.
Next speaker is Betty McGah, organization representative self, purpose of visit, deeper issues than discipline.
My name is Betty McGah, and I live at 2606 Evergreen Street. I admit it, I was one of those parents, the parents who were highly upset that bad kids were being sent into their schools and they were creating discipline problems and classroom issues. My anger got the best of me several times. I'm not, I'm not proud of it. And I stepped back, and I started to really dig into the weeds of what was going on, and I discovered that this issue is much deeper than discipline. We have a reading problem of astronomical proportions. I was fortunate enough Tuesday night to attend the community meeting on Huntsville City Schools at Harrison Center. When I left, I left with a broken heart. We have a large portion of our children, and I just found out tonight, we have 14 schools of children who have more children that can't read than can. Yesterday, I dug a little deeper. In District 1, at McNair General High School, 3% of eighth-grade students, 2000, 2015 ACT Aspire, Aspire, read above grade level. And that may sound like, oh, that's above grade level, that's okay. It's not, where only 18.03 read at grade level, and nearly 79% read below. If they can't read, they can't do math word problems, they can't do problems on science tests, history tests, or anything else. To go a little deeper, a friend posted a video chat on Facebook after the meeting. To go a little deeper, a friend posted a video chat on Facebook after the meeting the other night, and he said something that really struck a bell with me. To paraphrase what he said, he essentially said that it's much easier for a child to cause a disruption in the classroom than it is for a child to admit that they have a reading problem or that they can't read. And I believe that there couldn't be a truer statement. We have a problem that is so much bigger than discipline in the BLG. Our teachers have spoken to this. Your beloved testing is proving it. You and our city leaders are ignoring it. Our children are the future. It's not just affecting our present, it affects our future. We want these children to be the leaders of Huntsville, Alabama, in the future. That being said, I do know we do have students that are unruly. We're gonna have that, but I would put money on the fact that if we address reading, that the most of our discipline problems would go away. For those parents who are like me, I challenge you before you overreact, before you decide that we have too many bad kids coming into our school, dig a little deeper into the weeds. I've also heard in the last week, someone who represents for you called parents noisy and small. This is not small, and if you were making a noise that you should be making about this, we wouldn't have to.
Good evening. I thought I wasn't gonna talk, but it's pretty hard to stay out of it, you know? Y'all have got a tough job. We appreciate what you do, but the teachers, the parents, and the children's got a tougher job. It's not easy raising children today. It's a responsibility. I was a mother and a father to both my children, and they didn't have it easy. Education was a key word. My son has two degrees, my daughter has one. They could not marry anybody that didn't have a college degree. So it's up to the parents to set the standards in the households, how the kids are gonna act when they grow up. They don't have it easy today either. Google Fiber is not free in this city, as the mayor may let it to be. He finally said, "It's fifty-five to sixty million." Now, I'm for change in the right direction at the right time. And then a lot of people were fussing about the utility bill. Bills are going up. Two fifty now, and a dollar and a half in October. Smart meters and fibers up in their utility bills. Smart meters is fifty million, so I don't know why they don't tell the truth when you lay it out there. Elected officials have a problem laying the truth on the table, letting people hear the facts. You know, a lot of people are going to homeschool today. We don't want that. A lot of people are moving to Madison. We don't want that. We want to keep our people in this city, in our schools, in a good, with good teachers, in a good order, and I know you all are trying that. If I had my way, we'd throw all the telephones and the computers in that garbage over there. That's true. I don't see my grandson writing like he should. He's not reading like he should. We go eat, he's not communicating with the family like he should. He's not allowed to take them with him there. But anyway, I mean, communication through the family, with the schools, with the lessons, how you learn, with common sense. I mean, you can talk all day, you can make all kinds of guidelines, you can do all kinds of things, but we in this city have got to settle down. Everybody thinks the school's in a big mess. Not everybody, but a lot of people. We've gotta settle down and try to solve the problems it's facing us out here. I don't want the city heading in the same direction, and people saying, "We wanna be the first to do this, and we wanna be the first to do that." That's not important, as it is to listen to the public. Communicating with the public. And reading, we don't need special reader people, especially teaching our children how to read in the schools. I don't know where you, who does that and what you do. They need to let them get up and read a page every day in a school lesson. It's time for me to quit. I gotta hold on, I'm gonna save it. It's good always talking to you. Anyway, education is my word, and you all are first with it. Thank you.
Our last speaker of the evening is Deb Stern. I didn't say representative, but I'm assuming self and purpose of visit is thankful.
Good evening. I'd like to use my three minutes tonight to continue the teacher's celebration this month by thanking a few of the many wonderful teachers my boys have experienced over the past nine years. But first, I'd like to thank the elementary, middle, and high school administration and staff that have welcomed me into the schools over the years. They have valued what I have to offer as a parent and a volunteer. I would also like to thank the librarians, Suzie Elliott, LeAnn Childers, and Cindy Maxwell for making the libraries the happening place, not for the internet or the cafe, but for the great selection of books. Hampton Cove Middle has checked out over nine thousand books and ebooks this year, and they have about six hundred students, so you guys can do the math. For elementary years, Teresa Brumlo, Susan Connor, Dixie Sealy, Nanette Ressis, and Susan McCloskey were magical with inclusion classes. They had children ranging from special needs to gifted. They challenged every student while moving them through the year as a cohesive unit. I'm also thankful for the sixth-grade reading team at Hampton Cove Middle, specifically Vicky Lanza and Debbie Hester. Before the district-wide Protected Reading List, teachers were able to select what their classes would read. I watched these teachers' excitement and creativity as they made reading fun. They found a great piece of literature that might have been only for advanced students, and they would find ways for your inclusion and grade level to experience it. For example, you've got Christmas Carol, which is pretty difficult. They found a graphic novel and a DK version with a visual to help understand unfamiliar terms. And then they would celebrate these books. For instance, it would be an English tea, and we have so many, my boys remember all those memorable book celebrations. I've watched Vicky Lanza mentor younger teachers in working with struggling readers and teaching reading standards. She'll use an inexpensive device like this. It has so many resources that comes with it. It hits your standards, doesn't cost a lot of money. That's what she's trying to show the young teachers. A huge thank you to the seasoned teacher that was bold enough to tell me it was okay for my son to repeat pre-algebra his eighth-grade year. He was not proficient and only passed with a D his seventh grade, and so we did it again eighth grade, and it turned out okay. Cindy Howard taught him that second year. She gave him the knowledge base and confidence to tackle honors math classes through his high school years. He's now prepared to study computer science next year at UNA. Thank you to Dustin Carroll at Hampton Cove Middle for igniting the love of social studies for both my boys. You're not only, he's not only phenomenal with advanced students, but also inclusion classes. He's great with academics, but he also teaches our children to be better citizens and critical thinkers. Thank you, Mrs. Dotz, at Huntsville High for being an inclusion teacher this year. For my son that doesn't take constructive feedback well, he never got upset over all those red pen marks. Oh, my time's up.